Good evening, welcome to Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 8, 2024. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent of Schools. And as I usually mention, if you're here this evening, you'll have an opportunity at the end of the board meeting for public comment. If you're not in attendance and you're watching this live or you're watching it after the fact, please don't hesitate to call the district clerk at 716-751-9399. And she'll be glad to get your comment, question, or concern to the board. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to President Carlin.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Please stand, joining me, the pleasure of the life.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Item 1B, approved meeting minutes dated September 10, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 2A, resolved that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education approve the following items. Items B through E in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 3, extracurricular club. 3A, B, resolved that the Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District hereby approves extracurricular club proposals per the October 8, 2024 Agenda. Items B through F. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 4, personnel, 4A, accept the resignation of Samantha Gaines, elementary school building-based substitute teacher, effective September 13, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 5, personnel appointments by the Jeffrey Broad as public relations liaison for the 2024-2025 school year for the Wilson Administrative Personnel Unit Agreement, WAPU. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve high middle school advisors for 2024-2025 per the WTA agreement in effect of October 9, 2024. Lindsay Gallagher is high school Laker book club advisor. Karen Elwiso is middle school history club advisor. Teresa Reagan is sixth grade kindness leadership club advisor. Nicole Tiffany West is Model UN club advisor and Nicole Tiffany West is SEAL of Civic readiness advisor. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, Jeffrey Rogers is 1.0 FTE Lunker substitute school social worker in the elementary, middle, and high school at a per diem rate of $220 per day per the WTA agreement, effective on or about November 4, 2024. Jeffrey has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, Jennifer Curisak. As full-time high school teacher, A, effectively, effective retroactively beginning October 7, 2024, job group A, Step 1, with benefits per the CSEA agreement. Jennifer has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, Jamie Andrews is per Diem Elementary School building-based substitute teacher, effective retroactively beginning September 25, 2024 through June 30, 2025 at the current daily rate, district rate of pay. Non-certified Jamie has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have a question? I thought she was a certified teacher.
No. She was.
She was?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Where can you get that?
Oh, all right, okay. I'm sorry. I thought maybe there was a error.
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I've been informed we have to have one additional person present for item F, so okay, we'll head for next meeting.
It doesn't change the start date. We'll just retroactive it back, but we do need one other member.
Item G, Jennifer Hall, is food service helper monitor effective October 9, 2024, with salary and benefits at Step 1 per the CSEA Cafeteria Agreement pending New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, approve non-instructional substitute employee Lane Swasser, substitute food service helper, monitor, pending New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I, Angelo Guzadas is unpaid assistant for JV and varsity wrestling for the 2024-2025 winter season under the direct supervision of Coach Michael Carlo. Can I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J, Caitlin Waglianna is unpaid assistant for varsity softball for 2024-2025 spring season under the direct supervision of Coach Daniel Wazinski. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 6A is the audit report. And just some recap on the audit report. I guess we can give that now, right? Okay. We had a meeting with the senior auditor for Lumsen McCormick today by 45 over the audit report. Direct statements were in news and notes this past Friday. There's been no material findings and the audit went very smoothly. The auditor was very complimentary of Carolyn and her staff. Item solicited in the management letter that the district was over the 4% allowable unrestricted fund balance and over the allowable fund balance in cafeteria on which is not a great concern at all in most instances to management. And revenues and expenditures were, as expected, with the one exception, was interest earned on investments was around $1 million. So the district is taking advantage of investing to earn the extra revenue while the rates are this good. So again, compliments to Carolyn and your staff for outstanding job and investing with taxpayers' money wisely. Item 6A, except the 2023-2024 audit report is submitted by Lumsen and McCormick. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve Wilson Central School District bowls for 2024-2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, approve revised student calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, approve the creation of 1.0 FTE teacher A position. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, where is the Wilson Central School District in reviewing student needs and providing opportunities for all students? Has determined that additional co-curricular activities are warranted. To address these needs, district requests to approve the addition of the Unified Bowling Program beginning the 2024-2025 school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, approve memorandum of agreement between the Wilson Central School District, the Wilson Teachers Association, and the employee, and employee number 422 regarding districts, the employee's appointment and employment with the district. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, approve the agreement between the Wilson Central School District and Michelle, Mary, Teresa McNell, Jackson, provide professional therapy services for the district, effective October 1, 2024 through November 30, 2024, at a rate of $55 per 30-minute session. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, Wilson Central, Wilson Elementary School volunteer, our lead page. That's for approval. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I, approve the agreement between the Wilson Central School District and Cassidy Dice to assist the superintendent of schools with media projects for the 2024-2025 school year in the amount of $26 per hour, not to exceed $3,000. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J, approve the articulation agreement between SUNY Niagara and Wilson Central School for the 2024-2025 academic year. The articulation agreement offers quality college-level coursework to interested in applied high school students in order to enhance student learning while enrolled in high school, to better prepare students for the transition into the freshman year college, and to extend post-secondary credit at minimal cost to eligible students. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item K, approve option 1 of the electoral bid and award of electricity to Energy Co-op of America at the index gather rate of .01798 cents per kilowatt use. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No action on policies. Item A, committee on special education, preschool, special education, 504 plan recommendations. Approve CPSE, CSE, 504 meeting minutes, and IEP recommendations dated October 8, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 9, conference request. And thank you, Mrs. Pevan, for grouping these together. Approve conference request per the October 8, 2024 Agenda. Items B through X. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, Superintendent Carter for the conference reports.
Thank you. Let's start with Amy Sandy. Did you want to give your two conference reports first?
Hello, Amy. So the first one, New York State Association of Women in Administration. On August 8, I attended the annual NISO conference on lessons in leadership in the Gibson, New York. One of the keynote speakers, she, Kim, a former educator, and now CEO of Pure Edge Incorporated, a nonprofit foundation that partners with schools to aid global learning, discussed her background in education and her lessons learned as both a classroom teacher and district administrator. The second keynote was Michelle Ahous, a certified Gallup StrengthsFinder coach whose full-time position is the Director of Strategic Partnerships with the End Tourists, which is an educational tour group. She reviewed our results from a StrengthsFinder test. All registrants were encouraged to date prior to the conference. So kind of like they asked you a bunch of questions and you only had actually 20 seconds to respond. Like it was something that was least likely to most likely that span. And then at the end of it, you got a report that talked about what your strengths are as a leader or as, you know, what are your strengths as a person, your personality and all of that. So it was really interesting. And she discussed how all of those personalities actually, regardless of what your personality, all our strengths when working with the group, because everybody has their own strengths. And working together as a group, you could talk about your strengths and weaknesses and leaderships. Leadership, you need to recognize these within a unit while only for better overall results. So someone, you can play off someone's strengths. Someone may admit, you know, I'm not good at that. So someone else would be able to handle something. I also attended two breakout sessions on leadership and throughout the conference, and was able to connect with other, you know, educational leaders throughout the state, a lot from the Albany, New York area, which was very interesting to hear a lot of their stories downstate of what they're going through currently. So thank you for making this recording experience possible. And then my second one was the cultural proficiency training for educational leaders. Again, I'd like to thank the board for supporting my attendance of this training. Friday, August 16, at Erie Mombosis during this training, Paul Gaozovich, Jason Wonka, and myself, among many Western New York school leaders, were presented with several facets of a cultural proficiency education quiz. We were first introduced to a minority student panel who shared their experiences at their home schools regarding cultural awareness and opportunities for students and staff. Following, several speakers presented the many ways cultural proficiency can make an impactful change in education. Through our discussions with other leaders, we were able to recognize our shortcomings as districts. We narrowed down the starting point, which is building better overall relationships with our students for a greater understanding of each child's individual needs. We also noted the importance of preventing individual biases or personal backgrounds to affect interactions or opportunities with our students. We plan to continue this conversation throughout the year with administration, staff, and students. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I also have a conference report dated September 18, 2024. Senator Mr. Carter, member of the Board of Education, thank you so much for allowing me to attend Constitution Day with Karen Korematsu at the Robert H. Jackson Center on September 17, 2024. It was very informative and a meaningful program. Karen is the daughter of Fred Korematsu, the Japanese-American who is a plaintiff in the very historic Supreme Court case Korematsu versus U.S., 1944. She has been, the teacher's been reading, been teaching the case for 25 years. And it was incredible experience to meet the daughter of the main actor in this case. Korematsu was 23 years old in 1942 when President Roosevelt issued Executive Order 9066 calling for the Aminet removal of all Japanese-American, born or not, on the West Coast to an area of military control as a reaction to the bombing of Pearl Harbor on December 7, 1921. Korematsu defied the order and he believed that he had a constitutional protection of due process by, as an American citizen. He lost his case and a precedent was established that allowed for the use of the internment camps at military necessity. Of the 1,000, excuse me, of the 125,000 Japanese-Americans affected by this, two-thirds were American by birth. In 1983, the court ruled error in inducando, a Latin term that refers to error of judgment in the court. The verdict against him was overturned. It was no longer characterized as a felon. In 1988, survivors of the camp were awarded $20,000 each in compensation. And in 1998, Korematsu was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom. Thank you very much for letting me attend that conference. And it was by Nicole Tiffany West.
Okay. Item 11, fundraisers. Approve fundraiser request per the October 8, 2024 Agenda. Item B through what? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 12A, approve use of facilities request per the October 8, 2024 Agenda. Items B through E. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 13, field trips. Action required. 13A is approved field trip request per the October 8, 2024 Agenda. Items B through D. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 14, no action required. Trustee Stewart, any NOSP reports?
Yes, I do. We did have a meeting and it was discussed whether there were two dates possible for the legislative breakfast. One will be either January 25, 2025, or February 1, 2025. Matthew Kennedy was elected our president again and he is going to be checking with legislators to see which date would be best for them. And we are asked to ask our board members which date would be best for them to attend. So you could maybe let Mrs. Pevan know, maybe in a week, maybe? Would that be plenty of time?
If you can give Mrs. Pevan those two dates tomorrow in an email, we'll put it in news and notes and give them a week to respond back. That works for your trustee.
Perfect.
Perfect. Any locations yet or?
They're talking about for now. Again, going back to the question of the stretch. You know, nothing's in the, right here. I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Stewart. Item 16, Parker, do you have a report?
I bring good news. All right. So it's been a busy week, but a fun week. And that, of course, is Spirit Week. So first of all, I want to thank the class advisors, Mrs. Lech, Mr. Trippi, Mrs. Fornier, and Mrs. Smith for helping, of course, with the homecoming hallway decorations. All the halls looked really great. They were on theme. I heard from multiple students and teachers that liked this with some of the best halls they've had in a long time. So that was really awesome to see. We had the pep rally as always. That was really fun. I want to, again, thank Mr. Nevins for announcing at the games, Mr. Stack for refereeing at the pep rally. I want to thank Mrs. Gallagher and Mrs. Claire Moore, I guess Mrs. Herman now, for the yearbook photos and Mr. Roth, as well, I also want to thank. At the pep rally, though, really fun, great games. The students were feeling really, really exhilarated. And yeah, great stuff there. Same day, we had the Laker Fest. I believe this is the first time we've done this. Kaila Day Party, that was awesome, really awesome. There was this foam machine that was kind of spewing out bubbles that the little kids really enjoy and big kids alike, adults do, having lots of fun with that. I was serving free hot dogs on behalf of the high school student council. At the pep rally, I want to mention, this is the first time we've ever done this. We had a moment where kindergarteners, the class of 2037, came from the elementary school and met with us as seniors. And we gave them an echoist with a poem on it and gave them words of advice for the upcoming years ahead. That was really wholesome. That's something I would like to recommend on behalf of the students to do again. A lot of us really enjoyed that. And finally, of course, we had the homecoming dance on Saturday. I had a lot of people who told me that was one of the more enjoyable dances they've been a part of, especially the DJ. They want to rehire the DJ from prom as well. So that's my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Parker. Item 17, Superintendent Carter.
Thank you, President Carlin. It never amazes me, the reports from our student board member. And this is our third year of having a student board member. And for the items that I was going to talk about, you did. So thank you very much. They all appreciated me. They won't hear you that much. I do want to mention, though, the last thing that Parker mentioned was the new tradition that was started with the seniors and the Kinnaird kids. I thought it was just amazing. I didn't get to see it, unfortunately. I was at a high school principals meeting. I would have rather been at the pep rally. But the reports back from the, you know, the adults that were there, it was just amazing watching the older students getting down on one knee and reading the poems and giving the advice to the Kinnaird students. I think that just continues to show the young, the youthful kids we have here in Wilson. So thank you for whoever came up with that tradition. I wanted to talk a little bit about tax collection. It's been going very well in the month of September. It's been going very well in the month of September, although October has started. The month of September went really well. We had some phenomenal use of the first tax collection box. If you came in that door, the tax collection box is no longer on the wall. We kind of realized two things. One, while it said it was weatherproof, it wasn't. So there was some laying out of some checks to drive out, but it worked out pretty well. And the other thing was the number of people that were using it, well, over three hundred, almost four hundred people used it in the month of September, which is absolutely, four hundred residents, it's like three hundred eighty-something residents used it in the month of September, which is absolutely awesome. But some of our older residents coming up the stairs, just wasn't as safe, even though there was a rail, so seeing that we needed a new one, if you went in today, there's one mounted on the ground that's a little more accessible for people that may not be able to climb stairs. The in-person, a little over a hundred and sixty people participated in the one-day in-person, so if you do, I'll total, that's quite a few people. And we also saw two things. One, M and T has done an awesome job keeping up. When I talked to our tax collector, Lisa Smith, she said usually the checks that she gets one day, the next day they post it, so that means our residents are not getting a two-week delay, bringing a one-week delay in their tax processing, which is what they promised, and they met up to that promise. They promised to pick up every single day to the box, and they met that promise. And then the last thing is that Mrs. Oliveri reported today during our leadership being that we actually collected about eighty percent of our total taxes in the month of September, which is not as usual. We're using global, so all know, I appreciate the, you know, the board bringing that issue forward, the residents bringing that issue forward, and I thank our tax collector and our business office, Mrs. Oliveri, for making that happen. You know, there's still adjustments, as I said in the news and notes, there's still a few adjustments we want to make within person and some other things, so that was awesome. I won't mention anything else with homecoming coming, I did. I want to thank Mrs. Oliveri, the business office, and the Audit Committee for the participation in our twenty-three, twenty-four audit and the great work of our business office. It's a crazy time in August. That's the last thing you need, is to add an audit on top of getting ready for a new school year, and every year they seem to do an awesome job. My hope is that everybody does, on a weekly basis, checks out the Friday from the home. I know it comes at five-thirty on Friday, when nobody wants to read anything on five-thirty on Friday, but that's why you can let it sit all over the weekend or when you get it Monday morning. But the reason I mention it is, you know, there's, I try to make sure that even if you skip through the paragraph writing that I put through and go right to the upcoming events or our updates, I try to put pictures of things that are going on in the district. I ask each of the administrators, if I'm not, if I go to it, I get the picture. If the administrator's there and not able to go, I just ask them to send a picture, a couple pictures to me, to just highlight the great things that are happening. And then at the bottom, I always try to have the support schedule, and more importantly, upcoming events in the district. We have some unbelievable things that have happened already in September and early October, and again, as we go into November and December, there's going to be awesome events. I just, I urge the staff, I urge our community, our students, and also our board members to utilize that from the helm for all upcoming events. If you notice today, I'm wearing my big pink shirt. This evening, our girls, Versi University Volleyball Team is at New Fame, and today is the big pink annual volleyball game, and this shirt was a fundraiser for that event. And today was the day to wear pink and jeans, and so that's why you see, I saw a lot of people wearing pink today. And the last thing, two last things. One, on November seventh, I'm visiting the Genesee Valley Mombosis and for our Rural Schools Association Fall Board of Directors Meeting, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Rural Schools Association, and will begin our legislative conversation about what priorities as a rural schools we have, and I'll bring them back to future Board of Education meetings. So that kind of starts our advocacy season, and as I mentioned, there is a rural school conference coming up in December that I will be attending, and one of the first presentations is the Rockefeller Center that's doing the foundation study, so I'm very curious to see whether, it's supposed to be the first presentation after they send the study out, so see what goes. And this past Thursday, I had the opportunity for the first time to have our own Mombosis Superintendent's, Chief School Officers Meeting, which is basically the thirteen superintendents and our district superintendents, really all of the Mombosis executive staff together. And it was, you know, pretty informational, kind of shift on this year, so the Mombosis superintendent goes to Albany, all the district superintendents meet with the commissioner, and then she's going to come back and then meet with us and just send that information. And it works out because then I had an administrative meeting today with our leadership team, and I was able to impart that information to our leadership team, so I was certainly happy that everything, that just lined up. And that's my board report.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Carter. I'd like to thank the administrators for their report out. It was, again, as always, informative, and we appreciate you spending the time and coming forward, so thank you for that, a lot of the questions during that session. Second, I'd like to thank Trustee Prep for bringing the issue forward on the collection, the tax collection. He championed the cause, and it seemed like it's been pretty successful, so thank you for that. And finally, thank you, Mrs. Oliveri, for the audit, and please extend that to your staff. The auditor was, gave very glowing comments, and she could say some good things about how the audit went and the results of the audit and so forth, so again, thank you. Item nineteen is the public forum. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum and will not be allowed. The board may not respond to questions. They should refer to the superintendent of schools at another time. Please be respectful, and I'll make your comments in three minutes. Does anybody wish to come forward and address the board? Hearing none? Is there any need for executive session? No need for executive session, so I'll undertake a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have Vice President Stewart, who wishes to make a comment, so please do so.
I just wanted, I don't know how these things work. I just wanted to say that I happened to see on Facebook, someone took a picture of the seniors on the football field meeting the kindergarten kids, and oh my God, and I have an eyeball burst into tears. I thought that was the most precious thing, so I just want to thank whoever did it, and thank the seniors and whoever had to help do it, and wish we would have been able to come. Thank you.
Maybe next year. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good night.